Okay, your minute is up. I called to order the September regular meeting of Borough Council will begin with a moment of silence, "Pleasure of Allegiance" by Council Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just simply ask that everybody take the next sixty seconds in silence, observing in whatever way you feel most appropriate. And now the "Pleasure of Allegiance."
Madam Secretary, the roll, please.
Mr. Crancy?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Here.
Ms. Mellon?
Here.
Ms. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Stube?
Here.
Mayor Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Fisher-Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
And we're going to begin tonight down at the podium, so Borough Manager and Chief Lanus would join me at the podium, please.
First, Nicole, Sergeant Andrew Van Boekenberg. Sergeant Van Boekenberg, in recognition for outstanding service to the Police Department and the community of Carlisle, his efforts to a national night out on the second, two thousand twenty-two, signed Borough Manager Susan Armstrong and Chief of Police. National night out is a huge deal that we try to do and get people out. We have another officer who normally would be with us for national night out or be here for this celebration tonight, but unfortunately he's ill. But it's a huge deal, a huge outpouring, um, outpouring of people seeing what we do and seeing the different toys and things that we have. So in that regard, I'd like to present this plaque to Sergeant Van Boekenberg.
We're going to move on to recognize a couple of promotions next. Chief, the floor is yours once again.
Corporal Michael Stern. Certificate of Promotion, this is a certified Michael Stern, hereby appointed to the rank of Corporal, the Carlisle Police Department, signed this day, two thousand twenty-two, signed Borough Manager Susan Armstrong, Chief of Police Tara Landis. Congratulations. If you'll just step aside a little bit and stand facing the audience there.
We call Corporal Mayor together.
Corporal Mayor. Certificate of Promotion, certified Timothy Mayer, hereby appointed to the rank of Corporal, Carlisle Police Department, this day, two thousand twenty-two, signed Manager Susan Armstrong, Chief of Police Tara Landis.
So we're here to recognize formerly the promotion of these two officers to corporal. Officer Michael Stern and Officer, now both corporal, Timothy Mayer. The process of promotion, we've heard this a few times over the last several months, but I'm going to run through it again. It's important that everybody understand it's a transparent and open process. The promotion process in this case began in the fall of two thousand twenty-one with a written examination for those individuals wishing to be considered for promotion and rank. Those individuals having a passing score as outlined in the Borough's civil service rules and regulations were then advanced to oral examination. The oral examination was conducted by a four-person panel consisting of two persons from the Carlisle community selected by the Borough Manager, Chief of Police Tara Landis, and a law enforcement officer in the rank of Lieutenant or higher selected by the chief. I'll also note that citizens, residents, Vince Champion, Sonia Brown, Carlos Rojas have been community panelists. Following the oral panelist interview, the process concludes with a final oral interview with Borough Manager in the accompaniment of the Human Resources Manager. We applaud not only these two officers, but all the officers who stepped up to make that final interview session. Tonight, we commend Officer Stern and Mayor, Corporals Stern and Mayor, on being selected for promotion. The Borough Manager noted during the interview sessions with Officer Stern, who is a senior officer with force, as him being proud of his personal strides taken to grow professionally throughout his tenure, as well as his direct impact in developing other officers when serving in the capacity as field training officer and officer in charge. He is extremely proud to serve and protect his hometown of Carlisle. The Borough Manager so noted during Officer Mayer's interview that it was apparent that he holds true to selfless service to others, possesses a strong desire to perform well and serve our community with integrity and honor. We thank both of you for your commitment and dedication to our mission and wish you the very best of luck with your elevated responsibilities and continuance in ensuring our residents have an excellent quality of life. Congratulations to you both, and I'm going to pass it on to the Borough Manager for some comments.
Thank you, sir. Thought that we would share just a little bit of both of these individuals' backgrounds. You will see from their backgrounds that they're quite worthy of this promotion. Corporal Stern graduated from Carlisle High School in two thousand and was accepted at Shippensburg University where he studied criminal justice. He completed his internship with the Carlisle Police Department in spring two thousand three, and during that time, applied and tested for a police officer position within our department. After graduating from Shippensburg with his bachelor's degree in criminal justice, he was hired on by our department and went through the Harrisburg Area Community College Municipal Police Academy where he graduated in November of two thousand four. Corporal Stern has served in various positions in our police department during his tenure, such as field training officer, which at last count, I think he has trained approximately ten other patrol officers, held the role of officer in charge where he gained the knowledge necessary to lead his team on a daily basis, and in August two thousand twenty, was assigned to the Cumberland County Collision Analysis and Reconstruction Specialist Unit. Officer Stern is currently attending school to further his knowledge in accident reconstruction, having completed Phase One of a three-phase program. He also holds the distinct honor of being voted Officer of the Year in two thousand twenty. I know that his wife remarked that he has been committed to serving and protecting his hometown since being hired in July of two thousand four. Corporal Timothy Mayer graduated from Cumberland Valley High School in two thousand ten and has actively served in the United States Army Reserve for nine years, currently in the capacity of a drill instructor. In two thousand sixteen, Corporal Mayer attended the HAC Part-Time Police Academy and was hired by the Borough of Carlisle in December of two thousand sixteen. Corporal Mayer has held various positions in our police department during his tenure, among others, field training officer. He's also a current member of the Cumberland County Special Response Team, Department Firearms Instructor, and a former member of the department's community policing task shift. Congratulations, Tim.
If I may, before leaving, both, it's always a side story. Everyone knows that for me, there's always a side story with officers. Corporal Stern is the guy, there's usually something else before Stern, but since his family's here, let it go. But this guy eats up accidents and wants to serve and serve our community on a regular basis, you know, and he's trained more sergeants than people who are ahead of him than anyone else. There's a list of people that he's trained and done a great job with Corporal Mayer, you know. First of all, we applaud their families, both the family, both Corporals' families are here, and you couldn't do this without them, you know. Couldn't make it without them or without, you know, feeling the things that go on every night, coming in late, getting up early, being out and stuff. So first of all, applause to the family, please. Corporal Mayer is also known as Turbo, and if I call him Mayor, he thinks something's wrong. Everyone knows him as Turbo, and that's because he's got two spades, speed, fast and real fast, you know. But if both of them can do attitude, that's what I share with the Borough Council, that can-do attitude is what makes Carlisle Police what they are. I just want to thank both of them and thank all of you for allowing us to promote these two guys today.
Thank you, thank you, Corporals. We have several recognitions we're going to be doing tonight, so don't go anywhere, because we always do a photo at the end of this with everyone. Chief, if you would like to call up our next individual, Detective Williams.
Before I do, may I recognize retired Sergeant Justice Judge Dan Friedman?
I was going to get around to that, but I was trying to avoid it. Now I'm stuck. I told him he was dead to me when he left.
Detective Williams, please, pardon, sir. Certificate of Appointment, this is a certified that Adam Williams is hereby appointed Detective to Carlisle Police Department this day, two thousand twenty-two, signed Borough Manager Susan Armstrong, Chief of Police Tara Landis. Congratulations.
Now we get to talk about Adam. You can stay up here if you want to stay. You have to stand and assist. So we have several detectives and former detective here this evening, and of course, former Detective Sergeant Dan Friedman. We have, we'll be talking in a bit about current Detective Nina Klinger and Detective Chris Miller here with us tonight. Now, I'm sure they'll tell you, I don't know, I don't know what your work is like every day, but I'm sure you tell most folks, it's not quite like Detective Briscoe and Van Buren from Law and Order, cases don't get solved so easily, and it's probably not as funny as Detective Crolton from Brooklyn Nine-Nine or Frank Dreben from, for those who remember Police Squad and Naked Gun, but there's a lot of work that goes into what you do day in, day out, and Detective Williams has stepped up to fill an open role. So the process of the appointment of detectives, we are taking some time to recognize now Detective Adam Williams. This process differs from what you just heard on the corporal promotions. It begins with the Chief of Police notifying officers of the opportunity for the appointment. Officers having interest in the position are required to submit a letter of interest to interview for the position and have a minimum of at least five years of Carlisle Police Department experience and two satisfactory evaluations. Officers are then interviewed by the Chief of Police and lieutenants. Following the interview sessions, the Chief of Police then makes his selection for this duty assignment, notifies the Borough Manager and the police force of the selection at effective date. Now, to my understanding, given Officer Williams' background, his work ethic, and ongoing interest to advance his training and knowledge of investigation, he was an ideal candidate for this appointment tonight of something to live up to, Adam. Join me, please, in congratulating Detective Adam Williams on his well-earned achievement, and I have no doubt that Detective Williams will continue to serve this community proudly and honorably. Congratulations. But wait, there's more.
Yes. All right, a little bit of background on Detective Williams. He grew up in the greater Harrisburg area, living in the city, Campville and Mechanicsburg. After graduating from Cumberland High School, he earned degrees from both HAC and Shippensburg University, the latter with a finance major. Detective Williams' professional career began at the corporate office of Giant Foods, the company with stores where he had worked at while in school. After six years working in finance and asset protection departments, though, Detective Williams had a midlife crisis, his words, not mine, and he decided to pursue a career change to law enforcement. Since being hired in December two thousand sixteen, Adam has taken on a number of duty assignments and volunteer initiatives throughout the department and our entire community. I don't know about you, but every time there was something going on, I'd always look and I'd see Adam was there, parade, neighborhood association meetings, et cetera, always volunteering, being engaged with the community. I'd exchange a smile with him and a nod, and I think he, you know, during those times, I was always impressed with how he held himself and represented the borough and the department so well. However, it is evident that his interest in investigations continued to grow, which essentially led to his training as a polygraph examiner in two thousand twenty-one, and his interest in pursuing a position with our detective division. We wish him the very best of luck. I know that he's taking the role very seriously. He's got good mentors in place, and I know that his wife Paula is extremely proud of him, and both are just proud to call Carlisle Borough home. So congratulations.
We promote you, we appoint you, and then we make you uncomfortable, stand there for as long as possible, and thank you for bearing with us. We have a lot to say, and I actually, next is, we're going to talk about Detective Klinger, and I'm sorry about this, but I have a few pages here that I'm going to go through. Detective Klinger's been with us for a while, and we want to run through everything she's done for us over the years. And, you know, everybody in the department has a nickname, right? But Detective Klinger is just Klink, right? And I think it's because she's probably the toughest one in the department, you're all afraid to give her a different nickname. But Detective Klinger started her career in January two thousand eight at the Municipal Police Officer Training Academy in Harrisburg Area Community College, and successfully completed her training and testing requirements in May of that year. In two thousand ten, she was appointed to the task shift with focus on neighborhood groups and outreach as the mission allowed. In two thousand thirteen, she was awarded Officer of the Year by Supervisors for the year two thousand twelve. From June of two thousand fourteen to June of two thousand fifteen, she was appointed as an Assistant Director of the Junior Police Academy with then Corporal Simon Jackson. Junior Police Academy was a two-week day camp for twelve-year-olds to learn about teamwork and police work. Each academy ended with a trip to Washington, DC. While at DC, the students visited the Law Enforcement Memorial and the DC Zoo. And while at the Law Enforcement Officer Memorial, each cadet was assigned a fallen officer from the previous calendar year to write a brief paragraph about the officer, then locate their name on the memorial wall and obtain a pencil rub of the assigned name. In two thousand fourteen, Detective Klinger was appointed to the Cumberland County Drug Task Force, part-time, performing covert drug buys and performing critical surveillance for apprehension of users and dealers, which aided in the successful arrest of many criminals doing harm to the local communities. In two thousand fifteen, she was awarded the Mayoral Commendation and Life Saving Award after locating a woman who had been missing for several days in March of two thousand fifteen. She also that year became certified as a pressure point control tactics instructor, probably another reason you get any other nicknames, for the Carlisle Police Department. In two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen, she refers to as the school years, Detective Klinger and the late Sergeant Jackson designed and administered a community outreach program for eighth graders at our local public middle schools. The program taught students about the who, what, why, and how of police work. It included a history of policing, why and how tools are used by officers, along with delving into the dreaded topic of use of force. Each year ended with kids being tested on what they learned. A trophy was awarded to the winning school. And I'll note, I was part of an open house tour with my son, I don't know if you remember this, years and years ago, and she did an amazing job with the kids, and I actually, we're standing there, we're trying to figure out what to talk about, and I said, "Tell them about your Batman utility belt," and it was so engaging with kids, amazing. My son still remembers that to this day, and it's probably six or seven years ago. For an eleven-year-old, that's ages ago. In two thousand sixteen from two thousand sixteen to October two thousand twenty-two, Detective Klinger has served as detective for the department. Due to the relatively small department we have and the large and multifaceted crimes that are committed in Carlisle, Carlisle does not have specialized detective divisions. As such, every type of crime is investigated by Detective Klinger, and she became proficient in the art of interview and interrogation techniques for what seemed an exponential amount of crimes, such as investigating homicides, crimes against children, and specifically crimes involving blunt force trauma to infants, white-collar crimes, crimes involving sexual assault, rape persons of all ages and genders. She's had many notable cases over the years. In two thousand seventeen, investigated two homicides, an infant homicide in July and adult homicide in November. She assisted in the investigations that ultimately resulted in the arrest and successful prosecution of the defendants. In two thousand eighteen, she received the chief's commendation for work done the prior year. In two thousand eighteen, she investigated a homicide that resulted in the arrest and successful prosecution of the defendant. In two thousand twenty, she was involved in the investigation of five homicides. She assisted in the investigations ultimately resulting in the arrest and successful prosecution of defendants. One double homicide attempt with the suspect arrested and awaiting trial, one solicitation to commit murder was investigated within arrest and ultimately resulting in successful prosecution, and one child luring investigation involving ten children, the investigation again ultimately resulting in the arrest and successful prosecution of the defendant. In two thousand twenty, she received the chief's commendation once again, and just last year, investigated a homicide where the suspect is now known and currently wanted. Over the last six and a half years, Detective Klinger was either the lead investigator or assisted in some capacity in many major crimes that were not listed above. Sexual assaults, child abuse, shootings, thefts involving tens of thousands of dollars, all requiring the same time, commitment, care, hard work, and attention to detail as all those I listed, and still taking care of a young son, maybe not too young anymore. You still think he's young, a husband and an aging father, and I'll also note during that time period, dealing with two close friends to the borough and the department who struggled and fell to cancer, and throughout that, always with professionalism. Chief, if you would present the certificate.
This is the recognized detective, Nina Klinger, fourteen years on the service, the sixth of the borough of Carlisle, Carlisle Police Department, this day, two thousand twenty-two, signed Barry Susan Armstrong, Tara Landis, Chief of Police. If I may? No, stand there, stand right there. Let me go off script a second. Nina Klinger, Detective Miller, which tells me the bias, I love my Marines. Thing with Marines, and I'll tell you, the can-do attitude of what she does has formed the job. Fortunately, there's a lot of foreign words that goes along with it, and you should know on a regular basis, you hear her on her station between stairs. Her family is my family. Her son A.J., well, I know she's a little kid, the street things, he's making a life. God, this is no respect to talk to him that way. When he offers for a set, and I call him department man, the time was right there, in the meeting for the rest of the cops, take care of him. I regret myself getting busted about anything. This is the tough one. We're going to feel this from Carlisle, you know. I'll never forget walking back there with a piece of paper, he's actually, oh, he looks busy, give me that, I got it. She's got my hand. Yeah, working on his, a lot of crazy stuff comes out of her mouth, but we love her. Sat right here with her father before he passed away, one of the worst shit was, and he said, I was telling one of the other officers' fathers that how happy we have to have her, have her, and I turned to him and he goes, eh, we tried. So, like I said, to go off script for a couple of seconds, I appreciate your notes, you know, this one is for me. We're going to miss you, kiddo. We're going to miss you.
It's a tough one for me, too. I'm going to miss you, Klinger. You know, I don't think you realize what an inspiration you are. You know, uh, I don't think you realize what an inspiration you are to a lot of young women. And some that's not so young any longer. Your strength, your passion for the community, for your job, how you're able to balance the personal with the professional. I just don't know how you ever did. But I always held you in very high regard. And I'm gonna miss that contagious laugh of yours. Among many other things, uh, I think Chief said it well. This isn't gonna be an easy one for us, um, as a borough organization. She's given her all for this community. I just wanna say thank you for just your friendship and for the work that you've put in throughout the years. And, you know, I wish you the best with your, uh, next chapter. And I get to thinking, I wonder what Klinger would do with all her time now on her hands, you know? I mean, she's gonna have all this time, and she's really good, you know? She'll probably drive the family a little crazy, you know, bouncing off the walls a little bit. And I thought, well, maybe there'll come a time that she gets a little bored and she decides, you know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna write my memoirs. Boy, would that be a novel. So I just wanted to present you with just a small little gift.
Thank you very much.
Why don't we, we'll, we'll take a brief recess. We'll do the photos, I, I promise, we'll bring everybody forward.
Now, now it's photo time.
Okay, we'll call the, the meeting back to order. And now is the opportunity for citizens and visitors to be heard. So we didn't have anybody, um, sign up beforehand, but this is the opportunity for anybody who would like to be heard on any borough matter to come forth to the podium, podium. We would need your name and address, um, and, uh, and provide any comment you'd like. You, come on up.
Yeah, that's a hard act to follow.
Thank you, council members. My name is Leslie Heikel. I reside at one twenty-one B Street, Carlisle, and I have lived there for six years and one month. I had originally planned to come tonight to speak about conditions in my home and the multiple repairs that my landlord refuses to address over the last year. However, things have changed today. Three other tenants had planned to, uh, speak on their issues as well, but I asked to speak, uh, on my personal issue by myself. Over the past three months, I have been in contact with the borough and have had two home inspections. Today, the borough contacted the landlord to advise the repairs that were required to be made. And today, I received an eviction notice from the landlord for non-payment of rent. Today is seven days past due, and the landlord was notified on September first that I would be late with the rent. I start a new job, luckily, next Monday, and he was well aware of that fact. He wants to charge me the rent, which is perfectly acceptable. He also wants to charge me a fifty-five-dollar late fee. According to my lease, the fee is twenty-five dollars. I also received a non-renewal notice, thirty days to move. The reason for the non-renewal was stated in an email that he sent to me today. I have decided to non-renew your month-to-month lease effective ten eight. Based on your rudeness and fact that I asked you to simply not be there yesterday when I stopped along with your, when I stopped along with your previous rudeness towards me, and I couldn't even leave for a few minutes until I inspected the ceiling. So James Wolf, President of Blue Wolf Properties, which I'm sure probably half of you know his name, is upset that I didn't leave my property in a pouring rainstorm yesterday so that he could inspect my property. According to PA law, residents are not required to leave the premises when a landlord does an inspection. And the reason James Wolf, President of Blue Wolf Property, was in my home yesterday was because he was replying to my April twentieth request to look at my kitchen ceiling, which is about to fall down on my head. It took him five and a half months to look at my ceiling. The bathroom sink that wasn't, won't drain, and the bathroom toilet that is loose and won't flush was never addressed yesterday. The landlord, James Wolf, is upset because someone corrected him. Someone stood up to him. So he is going to evict me. James Wolf is also upset that I reported him to the borough for the current living conditions in the entire building. The conditions there include, and are not limited to, the foundation of the building falling onto the sidewalk, the roof of the building falling onto the sidewalk with every storm, and roaches throughout every single unit in the building. I, I have tried to work with James Wolf over the last six years. I've never had an issue. I have been late four times in six years, and two of those times were last year due to the pandemic. The neighbor beside me, to my left, to my right, sorry, right, is three months behind in rent. She has received an eviction notice. The person to my left is one month behind, one month and a couple of days behind in their rent, has not received an eviction notice. I, however, have received an eviction notice and a non-renewal notice because I've been there for six years, and he can actually do that legally, because I stood up to him. And he's a misogynist, and he doesn't like that. So I am here tonight to ask the council and the borough to hold this bully accountable. James Wolf has multiple properties throughout the borough, and I'm sure he treats other tenants just the same way. I've lived in my house for six years, and anyone who speaks to him, requests repairs, or disagrees with him in any way, he evicts immediately. Most of the time illegally, and most people won't stand up to him. I, however, am not that person. I'm going to stand up to him. I'm gonna pay my rent this Saturday, and then I'm going to sue him for uninhabitable conditions. Contacted the borough, I'm speaking with Malcolm, I'm speaking with Jordan. They are well aware that he is going to be fined for multiple, multiple living conditions in the building. I only ask that the borough, pr- please do something about this landlord. And if you wanna put another word in front of Lord, you can certainly fill it in there, it starts with an S. I've lived there for six years, and anyone who says that my, my property is not in pristine condition would be fault, would be wrong. His assistant walked in, and the first thing out of her mouth yesterday was, "Your place is so adorable, it's so cute." So my place is clean, I've never had any complaints. I've always been on time, except for the times when I haven't, and he has let me go with no, no problems. But suddenly, somebody stood up to him. I've seen three tenants evicted because they disagreed with him within the last five years. Please make him do repairs, fine him if you need to, because he's screwing people over really, really bad, but want a, just a place to live. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Is there any other comment this evening? None, anything by Zoom? Okay. Uh, move then on to the, uh, consent agenda. This is a list of routine items, do not appear to be controversial in nature, and which probably do not require additional discussion. They can, can be acted on by one motion in their current form. If discussion is desired on any particular item, any member of council or the public may request the item be removed from the consent agenda, and that the item will be considered separately. Okay, I'll, I'll run through this, just, just a note for clarity. Due to a clerical error that listed the incorrect meeting date on the August council agenda, all agenda items that were voted on are also being acted on once more, just out of a conserv- conservative advice and good advice from, from the solicitor. So you might see some things that we saw previous month. Is there any item that's being requested to be removed from the agenda? The consent agenda? None, none by council, none by the public? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by the Deputy Mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mellon, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. That means every, for those in the audience, everything on the, on the white pages has, has been approved. Onto the regular agenda, there are no table continued and recurring items. There is an item under the Mayor's Report, which will require first, under the revisions to the, to Sunshine, that we amend the agenda to insert this item. So I'm going to make a motion that we amend the, the item to, amend the agenda to insert the item that, uh, council approved the acceptance of donations designated for the purchase of equipment and accessories to support skateboarding classes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the Deputy Mayor, any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. So now that item is part of the agenda. It was added, uh, based on, uh, and permitted based on advice from the solicitor that it's, uh, de minimis in nature and involves no expenditure of funds. I'll have, the Deputy Mayor, she wants to jump in on this, too. But there's, there's an effort by that very popular skateboarding class that we had, earlier in the year, uh, to have some, some loner boards and pass out skateboards for the upcoming class. And they're trying to raise, raise funds in that effort, uh, and they need a conduit for those funds. So this is really just a pass-through for, for the funds, they're trying to raise about forty-five hundred dollars. You may have seen, if you walked by, that, uh, End Design is doing a fundraiser where you paint your own skateboard, and forty percent of the proceeds, are being donated to the Carlisle Skateboard Club to, to support the effort also. And that's taking place on October eighth and October fifteenth. So what I'm asking council to do is just simply, uh, approve and permit the borough's use of the, as a conduit for, for these, these funds. And I'll, a lot of Deputy Mayor, if you'd like to make any, any comments.
I'll just say that this is, uh, in different forms, this has worked over the years. We've used the DCA previously, it's sometimes for park renovations, but this is just going through the borough itself. But this is a, a, a nice, um, connection with our community of being able to support, fundraising for good causes without having to have our residents build a five oh, five oh three seat.
Five oh one, two, three.
Yes, that's it. So this is, this is very helpful, and they've been doing incredible work. And, uh, I'm really excited for them to continue their process, so.
So with that, is there a motion? Well, I'll make, I'll make the motion. I move that council approved the acceptance of donations designated for the purchase of equipment and accessories to support skateboarding classes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the Deputy Mayor, is there any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you all for that. Move on to Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have one item, uh, this evening. I move that Borough Council approve the two thousand twenty-three Minimal Municipal Obligation, MMO, budgets in the amount of six hundred fifty-four thousand, six hundred twenty dollars to fund the police, non-uniform employees, and four oh one A pension plans for two thousand twenty-three as required by Act two hundred and five of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Motion by Councilor Stube to approve the two thousand twenty-three Min- Minimum Municipal Obligation, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Cramsey, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And that concludes the Budget and Finance Committee report. Thank you, Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have one item tonight. I will make a motion that Borough Council may enact an ordinance approving an agreement between the Redevelopment Authority of Cumberland County and the Borough of Carlisle to include, but not limited to, the continuance of leasing of office space, parking, and basic services in Borough Hall. Agreement shall be retroactive January first, twenty twenty-two, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Councilor Cramsey has made a motion, uh, to approve an agreement between the, the Redevelopment Authority and the Borough for leasing of office space, parking, and basic services in Borough Hall. Is there a second? Wait, we still need a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Councilor Hicks. Any discussion on this item? I'll call the question, and that is a roll call, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Cramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Schultz?
Aye.
And that concludes Economic Development's report. We'll move on to ERCP.
Thank you. Uh, I make the motion that Borough Council may enact an ordinance reaffirming the establishment of the Carlisle Climate Action Committee and the Carlisle Truth and Reconciliation Commission.
Motion by the Deputy Mayor to enact an ordinance reaffirming the establishment of the Carlisle Climate Action Committee and the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mellon, any discussion? I'll call the question, and that's another roll call, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Cramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Schultz?
Aye.
Yeah, that's it. I have a few more items this evening. I make the motion that Borough Council, uh, appoint Ms. Donna Greenwood to a partial term as an alternate member of the Civil Service Commission. The candidate's terms, term will become effective immediately and shall expire on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion by the Deputy Mayor to appoint Donna Greenwood to the Civil Service Commission, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mellon, any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
I make the motion that Borough Council appoint Mr. Edward Hazel to a partial term on the Historical and Architectural Review Board. Mr. Hazel's term will become effective immediately and will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Motion by the Deputy Mayor to appoint Edward Hazel to the Historic, Historical and Architectural Review Board, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mellon, any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
And my final item is, I make the motion that Borough Council appoint Mr. Michael Jean to a partial term on Latort Regional Authority. The term will become effective immediately and shall expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Motion by the Deputy Mayor to appoint Michael Jean to a partial term on the Latort Regional Authority, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mellon, any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
And that completes my report.
Thank you. And Public Safety, so I, uh, move the council authorize the closure of streets and sidewalks in the Moreland neighborhoods to include Wilson Street, West South Street, Velvet Earth Street, Hillside Drive, a small portion of Noble Boulevard, and Moreland Avenue on Saturday, October eighth, two thousand twenty-two, from eight o'clock AM to eleven o'clock AM for the Moreland PTO five tech. The approval is contingent- The approval is contingent upon the receipt of a valid certificate of insurance or naming the borough of Carlisle as an additional insured and the applicant reimbursing the borough one hundred percent of the variable costs and ten percent of the fixed costs associated with this event. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Hicks, any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And that concludes my report. Public works.
I make a motion for Borough Council to approve the purchase of eight forty, eight hundred, eight forty, um, filter pla- panels for the tear, tear filters at the wa- wastewater treatment plant from Viola Water Technologies Incorporated for a not-to-exceed cost of one hundred and seven thousand dollars through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Co-Stars Program.
Motion by councillor Perry to per- purchase of eight hundred forty panels, filter panels at the wastewater treatment plant. Is there a second? Second. Second by councillor Stube, any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
That concludes my report.
The motion pa- the motion passes.
Now that concludes my.
That's our, we're just a little bit off tonight, right? There's a lot to start off the meeting. Got, got emotional. It's all right, let's shake it out. Okay, sustainability and community planning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, two items, uh, tonight. Uh, I move that Borough Council approve the Annual Action Plan and Community Development Block Grant Program Budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and authorize the mayor to execute all associated documents.
Motion by councillor Hicks for the approval of the Annual Action Plan Community Development Block Grant Program Budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and authority to execute all associated documents. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor, any discussion?
Uh, yes, I will be abstaining from this vote.
Okay, rec- rec- recusal by councillor Perry is, is noted. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
And, um, Mr. Mayor, I move that Borough Council authorize the submission of a letter of support for Tri-County Regional Planning Commissioners, Commission Safe Streets and Roads for All S S four A Grant Application for a Regional Safety Action Plan.
Motion by councillor Hicks for the, uh, authorization of submission of a letter of support for Tri-County Regional Planning Commission on the S S four grant application. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor, any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, new business. So this is another opportunity. If you didn't want to speak earlier, you have another shot. Maybe you were a little too shy earlier. You can speak now. Is there anybody here who would like to speak? While she's on her way up. Do we have anybody by Zoom right now? Do I have to ask that question? Yeah, okay. All right, you'll let me know if we do. Ma'am, we'll, we'll need your, your name and address.
My name, Betty Stanton. I'm from Carlisle, I think. Uh, I want to talk about, well, I was going to talk about Wolf also, but I stepped, I'll off of that. Uh, what about the water, about the sort, the, the burl bags? What's going on with the burl bags and the water and all this? Why do we have to pay so much money?
The, the stormwater fee you're talking about?
Well, they're changing the burl bags.
Right, so there, there won't be any more burl bags. That's, that's.
I know, but no one else pays for trash. You go to any other state and they don't pay trash. Like, goes in your taxes. I lived in St. Louis for thirteen years. I lived in Kentucky. I mean, there's no such thing as a burl bag. This woman here that just talked, she didn't have burl bags where she lived.
Okay, so you would, you would prefer that we, we subsidize the, the trash hauling completely by the, by the tax dollars? There's, you, there's a whole budget for that, so it pays for things from your.
I'm eighty-eight years old, I know.
Okay. Okay, do you have, do you have any, any other, any other comment?
People can't afford it. They're paying too much money. That's, I, I can rent burl bags. But everybody else takes their burl bags or their trash and puts it in somebody else's ba- barrel. I can sit there and watch them do it. No one does nothing about it. Nothing. Come out someday and I'll show you. They take their bags and put it in the burl cave, somebody else's. Up at Menestock, they drop it off in there. Or they drop it off down the corner, around the apartments. They don't do anything about that. But we're paying for all that. What are they gonna do now? Down in St. Louis, they had a, a bin that was down an hour and everybody put it in the bin and at the end of the week or whatever, they picked up that bin where the trash was and you didn't pay for that. Not at all. So I mean, you have to check out other places because this is outrageous. People can't, don't have that money.
Well, tha- well, tha- thank you very much for the comment. What we'll be doing over the next several years, obviously, we, we had to bid out a contract this year. So over the next several years, first staff is going to be looking at, at, at other options, including bringing, bringing the service in, in-house. So you'll, you'll want to pay a lot of attention of about two, two years from now, we'll really start that, that d- discussion publicly in our.
Two years from now, yeah. I'll be dead and buried.
Well, I hope not.
No, I probably won't. I'll probably outlive you.
You, you're very well known. You, you haven't even met my kids yet.
My great, my grandson had a stroke. He's fifty-seven years old. He lives with me. I mean, thi- this is no fun. He, he don't know different days. He, he, he knows me because I brought him out to hospital. He was in the hospital from March until July from a stroke and he worked every night in one of the warehouses, every night. I mean, he worked every time. He, but he lived with me. I raised him. And he's fifty-seven. He just turned fifty-seven. And sometime he remembers what he does, next time he don't. He's like a little kid. I, I'm, I'm all, starting all over here. I am. His name's James Cricket. I don't know if you ever heard of him. He is really, I mean, I went through hell with him. And I mean, it's no fun to go through all this here water stuff and this trash stuff. It's terrible. I couldn't park his car in my carport because it wasn't registered. It was in my carport. It wasn't allowed to be parked there because it was in my carport. He wasn't registered. He didn't have it registered because he didn't have his license at the time, not now. Now he can't drive at all. I sold the car. But there's things that, to me, doesn't even make sense around here. I'm kidding.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention.
And that Wolf boy, you need to get on. He, he lives across the street from me. He don't, but his, he's got five people with S U Vs in a one-bedroom house, no back door. That's how, that's how he, that's the people live.
Okay, thank, thank.
I know, and these policemen love it.
Thank, thank you very much. Okay. Uh, move on to, before we move to reports from, uh, council members and staff, um, I'm going to note that, uh, we will, after, after the evening's meeting, we will not have to come back in the, in the session. After adjournment, we'll have an executive session, uh, on matters that are, that are confidential. Um, and that will go around the horn, uh, Mr. Powers. Do you have any, any, anything you'd like to bring up this evening?
No new news.
Okay, okay. Uh, Anne Fisher Hansen is our new ambassador from, from the college. You can give us, I, I put Mr. Powers through this last, last month. Uh, I'll put you through it. Give us a brief in- introduction and, uh, and anything you'd like to talk about, what's going on at the college. Um, I just attended convocation, uh, a couple of weekends ago. It was a beautiful event. I'm not sure if you were there. I don't know. There were a lot of people there. Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, yes, so I am Annie Fisher Hansen, Carlisle Borough Ambassador. Um, I'm very glad to be here and thank you for having me. Um, I do have two updates from the college for the start of the year. Um, they both regard our Homecoming and Family Weekend, which will happen on September twenty-third to twenty-fifth. Um, two events that I would like to note during that weekend are the groundbreaking for our Alumni and Family Center, uh, which will take place at the Historic President's House on September twenty-third at four P M. And also the inauguration of John E. Jones as Dickinson's thirtieth president, uh, that will happen in front of Old West on the Academic Quad September twenty-fourth at ten A M. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Councillor Mellon?
I have nothing this evening. Thanks.
Councillor Stube?
I have nothing for this evening. I'm just trying to take a drink of water. Councillor Ramsey, anything?
I have nothing today. Thanks.
Um, I, I will say, we, we had a lovely lunch at the square this afternoon, the deputy mayor and I. We, we started activating, uh, activating that space ourselves. Uh, we had a couple of visitors while we were there. I, I didn't, we didn't get any complaints while we were sitting there. I did get one on my, on my way and I've already passed that, passed that along. Nothing major. Um, perfect day for lunch. Um, so everybody should get out there at the, at the square and enjoy the sunshine, uh, while, while it's still warm. Uh, great, great place to be.
I agree. It was lovely. Um, the only thing I wanted to bring up tonight was I wanted, I did, uh, talk to a couple, um, officers as they were leaving, but I did accidentally, um, turn down an alley and, and ended up in a, in a, uh, a scene that had, um, uh, the police, the P S and fire, uh, assisting the little girl that was missing the other day. Um, and I had to pull into the parking lot and I just stayed there because I wasn't going to try to get back out. It is a tight alley back there. Um, but what it did let me do is just, um, quietly observe a tense situation, but it was very well done. Um, it was really good to see everyone working together and knowing that, you know, at the heart of this is a scared little person, um, in a bad situation. Um, I also really appreciated that, uh, you know, that there was an offer from Tuanda Stallworth to assist and she was, I was able to watch her talk to this little girl and, um, and help the situation in ways that, um, that I thought were very impressive and, uh, and she was very patient. Um, and then I also saw, uh, a lot of, um, folks working then at, you know, guiding her to a car cautiously, in a comfortable manner, um, and getting her some help. Um, so that was a very, uh, it was something I didn't, I try not to put myself in any sort of situation and, um, sometimes I see the police and fire, um, doing their jobs, but I did observe that and I wanted to, um, just say thank you for putting all the effort and, and taking care of that little person. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hicks?
I have nothing this evening. Thanks.
Councillor Perry?
Um, I have nothing this evening.
Spur manager, do you have anything from, from staff?
Well, I will look to staff. I'd, and see, uh, Chief Landis, would you like to say anything more on the, uh, police recognitions or any of your operations right now? Any updates?
No, Anne, thank you very much for recognizing the officers and, uh, Deputy Mayor Landis, thank you very much for recognizing these guys. Unbelievable. Borough, we proud of the Borough of Carlisle. They, they, they stepped up, you know, Carlisle can, everyone just went out of their way to help this little kid. It was just great. Fire department, unbelievable. Thank you, man. Thank you so very much. Very humbly, thank you.
Chief Adorno, anything to add to that?
No, I was, uh, notified that from, uh, the town commander and, uh, I sent the information. I was at the station, we wanted to run and dispatch ourselves and, um, with the help of citizens and fire, working police, B M S, they all communicated together and ended a completely tragic situation.
Thank you. Thank you all for that, for that work. Please pass that along to everybody who was involved. And this solicitor gave us wonderful advice this evening leading into this meeting. I'm sure you don't have anything else to add. Yeah, then we will adjourn and head into executive session. Thank you all.